All right, then let's set this up. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, meeting Thursday, January 11th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. This time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, thank you very much. Roll call of the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Typhryd.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Present.
We have four.
All right, let the record reflect that Mike McDeer made is excused tonight. He's attending the League of Cities event at the Deizer Museum. I understand Ms. Boullet is no longer on the Planning Commission, is that true? Does anybody know?
I mean, she has not been reappointed yet.
She hasn't been reappointed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So here we are. And I understand in the communications, Charles Ernst, at some point, was listed as an alternate instead of the vice chair.
I brought that to the attention of the City Clerk's office, and they'll be correcting it.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. All right, at this time, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, item PC 1-18 was scheduled for another meeting, so it won't be heard tonight.
Okay. All right, very good. In this case, the Chair will call for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. So moved by Kenny Each.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Pashon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll sign those. All right, any communications? None? No continued public hearing, so before we begin with the items at hand, Mr. Held, you have, you wish to make an opening statement?
Yes. So there are two matters that I'd like to deal with preliminarily. First is, which is the first item in the order of presentation of a quasi-judicial matter, the disclosure of ex parte communications.
You're here!
Can you hear me now? Hello? Thank you. So there are two matters that I wanted to discuss preliminarily. This went out.
Oh, this could be a very long night.
There are two matters that I wanted to discuss preliminarily. I can't hear you.
Try one of the podium mics, see if that'll work.
Two matters that I'd like to discuss preliminarily. The first is what we call ex parte disclosures. It's usually the first item that's dealt with in the order of proceedings when in a quasi-judicial matter. I wanted to make sure the board was, the commission was aware that under applicable statutory and city ordinances and statutes and ordinances, you are allowed to engage in contact with citizens, the applicant, and the applicant's representatives prior to a meeting. That is permitted under City Code Section 2-391 and under Florida Statute 286.0115. There seemed to be some confusion as to whether you were allowed to engage in such contact. You clearly are. The only requirement is that you disclose it at the beginning of each separate quasi-judicial matter that is called. If you have, and I think, you know, that really covers enough of it for tonight. You all have copies, we've handed out the, both sections, the statute and the ordinance. The disclosure that's required is the subject and substance of the communication and identifying the person, group or entity with whom the communication took place. We are planning to have with you as part of a future meeting, a workshop to go over that rule and other rules, so it's clear, both as to matters of procedure and substance for voting, that we're all on the same page and you understand. Okay? The second point is just to read through a statement about the quasi-judicial proceeding and to assist the citizens in understanding what their role is in the process. So I'm going to go ahead and read that statement now. Please be advised that the following items on the agenda are quasi-judicial in nature, which is the item, the two items that are before you. When the application is announced, the applicant or his or her agent shall approach the microphone and state his or her name and address for the record. Any interested party wishing to speak on any item may approach the podium after the board has opened the public hearing. And all persons who will be speaking today will be sworn, given an oath as to their testimony. Each party shall approach the microphone and state his or her name and address for the record, and shall address his or her comments to the board. Each party shall speak for not more than three minutes in order to provide for order and time for other interested parties to address their concerns and comments to the board. The Planning Commission sits as quasi-judicial judges, hearing and ruling on each application, in this case, a recommendation to the City Council. The commission's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence. This evidence is usually in the form of documents and testimony from professional staff and experts. Citizen testimony can be competent substantial evidence if fact-based. Opinion alone is not competent substantial evidence and can be ignored according to the case law. All persons present are requested to recognize the dignity of this hearing process and to maintain decorum. We ask you to refrain from applause, audible objection or support for other persons' statements, and to have respect for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Held. All right, before we go further, do we have disclosures? All right, Bob?
As I mentioned to Mr. Held earlier, I received a phone call from the lobbyist and the attorney for the developer. The question that was asked of me, did I have any additional questions that's after the packet had been delivered? I asked if there was anything, I was reading the packet, asked if there was anything different in the packet or in their, in the packet than what I heard at the public town hall meeting? They said no, and I said I had no more questions.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
I too was appro, actually, I was called by the applicant's attorney and their lobbyist. The discussion that took place was just the general history of the site and the previous approvals that had taken place on the site, and I too was asked whether or not I had any special, specific questions, which at the time, I did not.
Thank you. Mr. Each?
Yes, I was contacted by a lobbyist telephonically on 8th of January at 9:44 AM, and he asked me if I had any questions and would like to have met with me, and I told him I couldn't meet, I had a Dr. Fort Pierce, and I had the packet, and I would duly read it and go through my packet with due diligence and come to the hearing and see what we have.
All right, Mr. Ernst?
Yes, I received a phone call on June the 8th around 10:48 from someone identifying himself as a lobbyist. I did not get the name. The minute I heard that he was a lobbyist representing the item before us, I told him I could not discuss it any further with him, and I rudely hung up on the individual, and so that's as far as I got with that conversation.
Mr. Ernst, just to clarify, would that be January the 8th?
January the 8th, 2018, sorry, Mr. Held.
All right. I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago from Bill Prevattell, expressing ideas and thoughts on what was coming down. And then I received a phone call, I think it was last night, could have been the night before, I've been a little busy at home, from both the attorney and the lobbyist on this, asking again if I had any questions, and I did not. So that's where that ended.
Well, let me add something, I just, thanks for bringing that up. I'm a resident of Keystone Point, and I've received more conversational phone calls and discussions with other residents on the subject than I can actually sit here and enumerate. So...
So, Mr. Pashon. Do you know how many residents there are of Keystone Point?
There's 885 residences.
Okay, and what part of that area do you live in? Is it in close proximity to the subject property?
No, I actually live about as far from the subject property as anybody in the development.
Okay, so just for future reference, it's helpful to contact your board attorney if there's any question that might involve, or any fact that might involve a potential conflict of interest. If, for example, there were less than 100 residents on the, in Keystone Point and you were closer to the subject property, it might be more of a question.
Understand.
In this case, it's not.
I'm sorry, I also was called by Mr. Prevattell as well, I'd say probably like three weeks, three, four weeks ago as well, and he had his opinions about this particular matter.
All right, now, Mr. Nixon, you have an issue.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just mentioned that there was an amendment to the agenda tonight, but for, to help some of the residents in attendance may have come to hear that item, so I want, would ask, you know, if you allow me to read to the record, you know, the full title of the...
You're allowed. If anyone feels that that's their interest and it's not going to be heard, of course, it would, might free up a seat for someone else.
Yeah. Yeah, the item is PC 1-18, which is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving an application for a conditional use permit in substantially attached form allocating 175 residential units from the primary pool of 2,500 floating residential units and 59,326 square feet from the pool of 750,000 square feet for non-residential use reserved for use within the neighborhood we develop an overlay district for a proposed mixed-use development featuring a seven-story, 175-unit senior residential apartment building with retail space, a six-story, 70-bed adult living facility and a three-level parking garage on the 1.947-acre real property generally located at 950 Northeast 124th Street and is specifically identified with Miami-Dade County, Folio Number 06-2230-040-0020 in accordance with Article 4, Division 4, Section 4-205 Subparagraph B and Section 4-305, as well as Article 3, Division 4, Section 3-402 through 3-407 and 3-302 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, provided for an effective date and for all other purposes. And as is stated in that title, this item was for the subject property located at 950 Northeast 124th Street. Thank you.
All right, so that item is not going to be heard tonight, so if there's anyone that was here for that item, that will not take place, you are free to leave if you have no further interest in the remaining items. All right, now, before we get into opening the public hearing, I want to take a quick survey. How many of you have been to a Planning Commission meeting before? Very good. How many of you have not been here before? Good number, okay. Let me go over a couple of real simple things. First, this is a board of record, meaning that very precise minutes are required to be taken for this. That places a certain burden on each of you as participant members of the audience to avoid speaking out of turn, no applause, no catcalls, no yays, no boos, because if it interferes with the record, that could have a negative impact on a potential future litigant in court. And we need to have a precise record of what's being said, so please keep that in mind. Second, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation. We don't decide the issue. We make a recommendation, and up or down, win or lose, this will go before the City Council. What you need to keep in mind is not to be redundant or repetitive. This is a platform, an opportunity for you to test out your logic for or against the item being presented. But if the items you want to say have already been addressed and read into the record, there's no reason to be repetitive. Lastly, because there are so many of you here, and I will blindly presume most of you want to be heard, bear in mind, it is our position up here to let you be heard. However, because of the large number of people here tonight, you will be limited to two minutes, and the commission secretary will control the clock. Now, I realize some of you may be anxious and not comfortable with the microphone, but two minutes is the best I can give you, given the number of people that are here this evening. So please keep that in mind. Now, at this time, we'll commence with Article 5, Public Hearings. This is PC 6-17. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use plan amendment to the city of North Miami 2036 Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use designation from residential low-medium density, 35, I don't know, what is the F T U? 35 feet, 12 dwelling units an acre, to Bay Shore Zone of 115 feet and 100 dwelling units per acre, to provide for the redevelopment of the real property located at 2305 Northeast 123 Street, also known as White House Inn, consisting of 46,424 square feet, or 1.07 acres in size, and specifically identified with Miami-Dade County Folio Number 0622280220010 in accordance with Section 163.3184 and 163.3187, Florida Statutes 2017, and the Sections 3-1102 through 3-1106, 3-1109B, and 3-302 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, further authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the stated amendment to the future land use map as required by Florida law, providing for repeal, conflicts, severability, codification, and for an effective date. All right, staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, just one thing. I'm raising the question of whether we should read both items, have one hearing, and then the commission can vote on them separately after.
All right, if you want to do that, we know that would certainly simplify all the disclosure comments. No point in going back and doing that again.
I just want to check with the applicant to see whether they agree with that. Is that acceptable?
Good evening, Mickey Mararo for the record, on behalf of the applicant, yes, that's acceptable.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, my understanding then is that if we did the separate, you're suggesting that, that one item, if it's approved or not approved, that it would affect the second?
Well, yes, they are linked.
And that if they are linked?
Yes.
We'll vote on them separately, but they are linked, and for this, were this to be approved, and you can't do half of, six of one and half dozen of the other.
So, if I can add, just, it's really just for efficiency, that if, let's say, 40 people wanted to speak at two minutes a person, that's 80 minutes of citizen testimony, that you would have to do twice. And at this point, you would just have to hear the item one. Have one public hearing, everybody gets two minutes, then you can consider both items.
Okay, all right, are we clear on that?
All right.
All right, so now...
We kind of agree on that?
Yes.
Because some of the other points that might be more contentious in the, in the ordinances might be in the second part of the ordinance.
Well, that way, people can speak to the project, to the totality of the event.
All right.
All right, so if we're happy with that, we'll go forward. All right, then we'll read into the record the second item, which is PC 7-17. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, entitled Land Development Regulations, at Article 1, entitled General Provisions, specifically at Section 1-106, entitled Official Zoning Map, to change the zoning classification from R4 multifamily district, 35 feet, 12 dwelling units an acre, to Bay Shore Zone District, 115 feet, 100 dwelling units an acre, to provide for the redevelopment of the real property located at 2305 Northeast 123rd Street, also known as White House Inn, consisting of 46,424 square feet, or 1.07 acres in size, and specifically identified with Miami-Dade County Folio Number 06-22280220010 in accordance with Section 166.0413C, Florida Statutes 2017, and Sections 3-1002, 3-1003, 3-1005 through 3-1007, and Section 3-302 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the city comprehensive plan, further authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the zoning map amendment, providing for repeal, conflicts, severability, codification, and for an effective date. All right, we read them both into the record. Now, staff will take the report on the first item, then on the second item. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application is for a small-scale amendment to change the future land use designation of the property located at 2305 Northeast 123rd Street, which is on the side of, former side of the White House Inn, to change that land use designation from low-mid-density residential, low-medium-density to Bay Shore Zone. And as was included in your package, you know, in the staff report provided, the staff recommendation for this item is for approval. Staff, the recommendation is based on the review of the applicable section of the Florida statute, you know, dealing with small-scale comprehensive land use map amendment, as well as, you know, the regulations set for, in the city's land development regulations for the review and adoption of small-scale land use map amendment. And to start with, I decide I'm complying with state law. Section 163, that 3187 of the Florida Statutes, established, you know, small criteria for small-scale developing amendments. And those criterias are, for an application to be considered a small-scale land use map amendment, decide most involve or use of 10 acres or fewer. The cumulative annual effect of the acreage for all small-scale development amendments adopted by the city shall not exceed 120 acres in a calendar year. Third, this application should not involve any text change to the goals, objective, or policies and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan, but just a land use change to the future land use map. And fourth, that the property involved is not located within an area of critical state concern as designated by Section 280-0552 of the Florida Statutes. And staff review the application based on this criteria, and the application has satisfied all those required, requirements of the state statute. Secondly, staff review the application, you know, to the extent they comply with...
I would like to ask, when do we file our protest to that application? Like, when do we speak about that?
All right, Mr. Held?
So, the order of proceeding is set forth in Section 3-303 of the code. There's a presentation by city staff, then there's a presentation by the applicant, and then there's public comment. There is some cross-examine after that, and then the public hearing is closed, and the commission deliberates. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, please resume, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, staff also consider the extent to which the application complies with the regulations set for in the city's land development regulation, more specifically, Article 5, Division 11, Section 3-1105 Subparagraph B. Those criterias, you know, are whether or not the application specifically advanced any goal, objective, or policy of the comprehensive plan. And the second one is whether it's the effect on the level of service of public infrastructure, that's another criteria staff needs to consider in reviewing such application. It's effect on environmental resources. And last, it's effect on hurricane evacuation, on the availability of housing that is affordable to people who work in the city of North Miami, and any other effect that the city staff determines is relevant to the city council decision on the application. And briefly, when it comes to the first criterion, staff, you know, believe that this application advances, you know, several goals of the city's, you know, comprehensive plan. And when we talk about the future land use element, one of the considerations staff also make in reviewing this application, it's the, for the area, the, that is, the land use category that has been sought for this application, which is the busy, this is our land use category that was recently adopted with the 2015 EU-based amendment to the comprehensive plan. And then the area currently covered by that designation comprises property lines along Biscayne Bay and funding Bay Shore Drive between the San Suce Estate, Waterway, just north of Northeast 121st Road, and the North Bay Shore William Lemon Park, which is designated as open space recreation on the city 2036 future land use map. This was our land use designation that created in response to the, the man expressed by a member, some members of the attendee that attended, you know, the comprehensive plan of the workshops. It went could policy in the company that allow for greater height and density, especially along the Biscayne Bay. So, this request, you know, is similar to those requests made by those attendees that doing that process for to update the comprehensive plan. And then this is why, you know, the applicant, you know, come today to request that same designation to allow for the redevelopment of the site. So, without going, because it's a long night, staff believe that many of the element of the housing element, the economic element, and as well as the future land use element, all those goals are being, you know, furthered by this application. And then we also look at the effect on the level of service for public infrastructure, mainly traffic circulation. The subject property is located on and is accessed primarily from Northeast 123rd Street, which is classified as a state-owned FDOT Class II arterial. The city 2005 transportation master plan indicated that in proximity of the site between Biscayne and Broad Causeway, the adopted level of service is E for that segment, which means that the current volume of traffic exceeds the waterway capacity, resulting in queues being formed at breakdown points. So, the request of staff for traffic impact analysis was submitted with the application which was conducted by Kimlyhorn, a consulting firm contracted by the applicant, to access the project access point and determine whether adequate capacity is available to support future traffic volumes on that segment of Northeast 123rd. This... traffic impact analysis was subsequently sent to the city's, you know, a traffic consultant engineer to analyze it and provide peer review comments.
A question to staff?
Yes.
Were there any other independent traffic studies done, either by staff itself or another party looking into the traffic impact?
No, Mr. Hald, no.
Just the applicant?
Just what the applicant provided, and then the comments from the city, independent, you know, traffic engineer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I mean-
And the city had a group take a look at their traffic study, and had some questions that were unresolved at the time that the letter came back.
They still being worked on, yes.
So, the traffic study they presented, our city planners, or not our planners, but the consultants, the traffic and transportation engineers, had issues with their study.
Yes, and those-
Have those been resolved?
I mean, some of them have been resolved, but some of them are still being worked on, because at the time of this writing, because of the time, we are still receiving comments from them. There were back and forth between them. And then what the applicant ultimately submitted tend to address that, but that was submitted after. And then so, this is again contingent upon that, because again, this is what you call an initial development order. We're still looking at those things, you know, at the time of DRC, and then even with the rezoning, we're still gonna look at those things. And then if anything that needs to be mitigated, they would have to mitigate that.
But in that, in that letter back to their, to the developer, there were some substantial issues that need to be addressed with their, with their proposal.
Yes, there was, you know, from-
And the answer was, we'll deal with those later, this is just for rezoning.
I mean, not necessarily, because even-
Specifically, is there a answer?
Even after we sent out the package, there was still conversation. And then we were involved in those conversations to address those comments, because we didn't want to take some of those comments to the meeting. And if you look at, you know, in the package, you know, at the very end, you can see the date, you know, and then most of those comments, you know, the traffic, and they're here to speak, I'm pretty sure they're here to speak, that they were dealing with Kelly Blum, which is our traffic consultant. And then some of them was, been there. There's basically some methodology, because, you know, to the methodology of the traffic study itself. But, and then she had some question about the queuing, and then there was a graphic that they had presented that she didn't notice in their later submissions.
Something as simple as driving into the building seems to be a problem here.
Yeah, yes, it is, and then-
So, that's the first problem?
Yes.
We seem, okay.
No, no, yes, I agree with you. But then they were trying to address that, and then they even had a simulation that they were in talk with FDOT to address that, providing your queuing along that, because along one twenty-third, you see having the double turn lanes. So, they were working on that, probably moving that, cutting that median that goes at the base of the Broadway, because, because we, to allow for greater length and then to provide queuing, you know. And again, I understand those concerns, and then we didn't take that lightly. And then, and then that's why we say, you know, that, you know, some of those comments are still being addressed at the time of this writing. We didn't want to comment and tell you something that there was no problem. We know there are issues on that road. And so, that's why, and then this is, they're still working on it. And then the traffic consultant, when they have a chance to do their presentation with the applicant, they would further expand that.
In your, one more question, please, just in your packet, in your, in your report, there was also some issues with the Shoreline Development Review Committee.
Yes.
The, I don't believe the applicant has applied with them yet.
No, no, but, no, that's a recommendation that is being made to them, that's-
But the, but the, but the head of that committee had some pretty substantial issues with this project. But since there was no submission of an application, there was nothing to rule on, other than the conversation here.
And then we have shared those comments with the applicant. And then to, and then, Mr. Mickey, I've shared, as soon as I received those comments from the-
Did they overcome the objections?
No, man, this is not something that they could, this is, they would have to comply with those requirements. Those are requirements. They would have to, they would have to adjust their cycling, because this is not really not a cycling review, but they would have to adjust their cycling to meet those criterias.
But does, but, but based upon what I read, doesn't that change the entire project?
That would be up to the applicant.
No, but this project doesn't conform at all with the Shoreline Development Review Committee.
Yes, again, I agree with you. That, if we were reviewing a cycling, and then I would say that, but this is just a land use map amendment. I mean, they don't have to build what it's here, but it's just the entitlement. I mean, then, then again, I mean, the criteria that we looked at really to review or land use plan amendment, that's it, we cannot really tie them to this. Yes, those are comments, that's why we gathered those comments. We solicited those comments from Miami-Dade County. But, and then we shared that with the applicant. And then one of, and when you go, as I go further in that presentation, when we go to the rezoning, and then this is one of the recommendations I made to have the applicant, you know, prefer or covenant, where it would abide by those requirements, as well as whatever height and number of units they propose here. Because, because all the studies, you know, is, for example, the-
And what are those covenants?
No, no, that's the applicant took to, I mean, we cannot require it.
Those are coming later as well, right?
I mean, with the rezoning, and then this is something, you know, and then this is why we bring it up to you, because you can make that recommendation, and then that's why we bring those issues as well.
Okay.
You've got a, our consultant is called Kittleson and Associates Incorporated.
Yes, Mr. Hald.
Put that in the record also.
Yes, Mr. Hald.
All right, and then that, the letter was dated December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
That was their first letter. There was another one sent on January as-
They have the executive summary, the introduction, the trip generation. The traffic study appears to assume that the site is eligible for twenty-five units acre density bonus per Section four dash two-zero-five A of the North Miami Land Development Regulation, which allows development up to fifty-two units on the site. Of the density bonus, fifteen units slash acre recognizes green building and sustainability, and ten units slash acre recognizes transportation-oriented development features, so forth and so on. That's, that's been in, and it's actually two pages. I'm sure you all have that in your, in your register. We do have, the point is that they have their consultant, and we gave it to our consultant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's why I just wanted to get that point across, that it's there, and the suggestions have been made, and they have to comply with those suggestions before the project can go forward.
Yes, and then, and as with any other small-scale amendment, and we look at those items, and then those criteria, those applicable standards of the code, and then in staff, you know, made a, based on the finding of facts, and staff made a recommendation to approve this, this small-scale land use amendment. And now going to the second item, if you allow me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, please proceed.
And this, I mean, you, I mean, people ask the question, why are we doing, you know, I mean, and some may, are we doing the rezoning at the same time with the small-scale land use amendment? Actually, this is allowed by this, by state statutes. So, again, Section one sixty-three dash thirty-one eighty-four, or the, so paragraph twelve of Florida statute, say that, at the request of an applicant, a local government shall consider an application for zoning changes that would be required to properly enact any proposed plan amendment transmitted pursuant to this section. Zoning changes approved by the local government are contingent upon the comprehensive plan or plan amendment transmitted becoming effective. So, this is what gives us, you know, the basis, you know, to review, to do this proceeding, having those both applications concurrently being heard by you guys. And if this zoning map amendment would be to implement, you know, the requested, you know, land use designation, the BZ shore. And then, again, staff conducting its analysis based on the requirements of the code, specifically Article three, Division ten, Section three dash ten oh three of the city's LDRs. First of all, consistency with the city comprehensive plan. And again, this application would implement that requested that. So, it meets the first criteria. The second one, whether the application contributes to the following factors. Would improve mobility by reducing vehicle maltravels for residents, balancing land use in a manner that is vehicle. So, again, staff look at this as well. And, and one of the things, you know, we have to take into consideration that the city is what we call a TCE, or Transportation Concurrent Exemption Area. The entire city is, and then that has been established since, you know, early, early two thousand, two thousand and three, two thousand and four. So, essentially, you know, we can look at, you know, application that provide that, where the impact, the traffic impact on the road, you know, we have to look at them, but we cannot use that essentially to kind of deny an application. But however, once you wish a certain threshold, if those, the impacts of this proposed development, you know, allow the level of service to go below an E, for example, they would have to provide, you know, mitigation strategy to address that. And then again, we will also remember with two thousand and eleven, when we had all those changes to the Community Planning Act, and then the shift was really, there was a shift in traffic concurrency as well. And then, because, I'm saying all this, because what we do, we have to be consistent with the state law, Chapter one sixty-three. It was one, whether a shift from concurrency really to meet the level of service standards really adopted in a comprehensive plan. And then, and on most of those city wideways, and even state-owned wideways, because the acceptable level of service, you know, that is E, really. So, if anyone can perform at that level, so we basically cannot go and say, you know, that's why we say, and if you, and then development causes, you know, the level of service to drop below that, then they would have to provide mitigation strategies. So, I wanted to say this. And in other criteria, look at, you know, whether the development promote high-quality development, and create affordable workforce housing opportunities for people who work with the city, implement specific objectives of, and policy of the comprehensive plan, and promote development patterns that will not interfere with hurricane evacuations, and will not cause a diminution of the market value of adjacent property. And then as listed in the staff report, staff look at all those criterias and made that recommendation for approval. Again, we, here in the rezoning, we tend to adjust more so than the small-scale amendment, the comment that we got from the Shoreline Committee. And then so, that's why, you know, staff, you know, believe that, you know, if applicant, you know, he agreed to prefer a covenant, and we're not trying to do contract zoning, you have prefer a covenant, you know, that, say, you know, if this is approved, they would have to comply with all those things before any cycling application need to be submitted and reviewed by the city. So, essentially, this is, and as well as the density limitation, because all the study that have been provided in connection with this application only involves fifty-two units. Yes, it's, you are allowed to have a hundred units in that land use designation, but the application you submitted, even though we're not reviewing cycling, but specifically requests fifty-two units. And I think the density limitation can also be added to that in addition to the shoreline regulations, and as well as any additional city and county and state requirements. So, based on those things, staff recommendation is one for approval.
Let me, can I, can I say, I mean, maybe I should wait and ask after the developer comes up. But you keep saying the fifty-two units, but there's nobody that's planning to build a fifty-two unit building. Throughout the staff, throughout the staff report, throughout the staff report, it says that the developer, the owner of the land, is going to redevelop this proposed condominium project. I've asked these people directly with their town hall meeting, they say they're in the car business. They're not gonna redevelop this at all. They are, they're coming in here with a picture of a fifty-two unit building that I don't think works. The Shoreline Development Review says the twenty-five-foot setbacks they have need to be seventy feet on two sides. So, they're gonna shrink the project down by a hun, but nothing fits anymore. The, this fifty-two unit project, while they're telling you that's, I think, it's a myth. The only people that believe this is a fifty-two unit project is our staff. Because simultaneously-
Please, please, hold, hold, hold.
Because simultaneously with this proposal, their advertising, their exclusive listing agent is advertising this at a hundred and fifteen feet and a hundred and seven units. This project, this was, I printed this out two days ago off the website. This is their exclusive listing agent. So, they're telling you it's fifty-two units. The people they're trying to sell it to, they're talking about this iconic location for, for a full-blown BZ development.
And then this is why the, that covenant would address this.
Well, okay.
No, but a covenant, staff cannot change a covenant.
You have a, we have a covenant, I read in here that we have a covenant put in here that that's gonna only be fifty-two units. Am I correct?
I mean, that, that's what-
That's, and we cannot change the covenant, so they can advertise whatever they want.
They don't have those entitlements.
We're gonna only build fifty-two.
We don't have a covenant in this thing.
It was in here.
No, I mean-
No, it's not.
Yeah, exactly, it needs to be created, yeah. Exactly. No, no, that's in part of my recommendation.
So, the, so the BZ allows for what height?
A hundred and ten.
Hundred and fifteen.
Fifteen, yes.
How tall is this project?
A hundred and fifteen, yeah.
No, it's a hundred and twenty-five. Take a look at your, it's twelve floors and a hundred and twenty-five feet. Take a look at your, take a look at what you sent us.
No, and that may be, yes.
The first floor is only four feet above sea level, by the way, and the top floor is a hundred and twenty-five feet. So, this doesn't even fit in the BZ, though.
I think there's an underground, I'm pretty sure, there's an underground. They would address that, but there's an underground parking level. That's why, you know, they-
It's still a hundred and twenty-five feet.
And then I do agree with you, but again, you know, this is just, you know, for informational purpose. This has really, we-
So, we don't know how tall it is. Yeah, I mean-
I mean, and I can tell you, staff determination was determined on the finding of facts. I mean, there may be advertisement out there, but we do not review advertisements in the process of reviewing a small-scale, it's whatever is submitted, you know.
I'm not trying to-
Yeah, Mr. Chair. If I can recommend that the commission refrain from getting too far into the application at this time-
That's fine.
-until presentations can be made.
Okay, we can do that. You can hold those comments until after the developer presents.
Fine, we can.
All right, well then, now that we're ready for that, I think perhaps we can move on to the developer. We might get out of here by midnight, if we're lucky. I trust somebody's bringing food in.
Give me one minute to put up some boards.
You can have two if you need it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Very active audience. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. My name is Mickey Marrero with the law firm of Burkow, Rodelle and Fernandez. With me tonight is Jose Martinez, represents the applicant, John McWilliams and Ally Haynes from Kimly Horn Associates, they are traffic engineers, Andy Dolcart, who is our economic expert, Mitch Edelstein is here with us as well, and my partner Jeff Burkow. Together, we represent MAR twenty-three oh five Northeast one hundred twenty-third Street, also under the jurisdiction of Miami Automotive Retail, who is the owner of the property, located at twenty-three oh five Northeast one hundred twenty-third Street, North Miami, Florida. We're here tonight seeking approval from, you know, recommendation of approval from you all for a modification to the site, to rezone the property to BZ, and also to have the concurrent modification, the future land use map, to designate the property. As you know, and I think a lot of this is, because sometimes, you know, we do a presentation, and we do a rebuttal afterwards. I feel like I'm at a rebuttal already, because so much has been said. But I'd like to give you an opportunity to hear some of what's the background on this property and why we are here today. As you know, our project was bought by the owner of Ocean Cadillac, and the original intent was to build Ocean Cadillac here. That was his vision. Our client thought it was a wonderful idea, we thought it would have been a great project. There was a lot of opposition for that, as you know, and really working with staff. Staff also felt that that was not the right use for the property. So, with our, with our client, we took a step back, really looked at the land use code, looked at the comprehensive plan, and said, let's take a second look at this. Let's find something better that will work with, with the zoning code, that will work with the comprehensive plan. And we took several months to do that. We hired Bob Swedrow to do architectural analysis on the property, and we're back before you today with that revision. Some of the big concerns that we heard, and I know, you know, there's a lot of concerns out there, but some of the big concerns that we heard in the initial phase was, we don't like the use. We don't think a car dealership or a commercial use makes sense on this property. Come back with something residential, we don't like commercial. So, we've done that, we've addressed that concern. This is a purely residential use, just like the residential use that's around it. And another real big concern we had from the decision-makers and from many residents was that the massing was just too much. The dealership, if you recall that drawing, those of you that saw it, it was really, it took up, the footprint took up the whole property, and really took that footprint all the way up to the height of the building. So although, I can tell you, I thought it was a beautiful building, it might have been an iconic Cadillac dealership, it was a very large massing. And what we've done today is we've modified that massing while it still reaches the maximum height of, of what the BZ zoning district would allow, the massing does only go up to, for about, a little bit under half the property. So there is open spaces eh, on the western edges of that property where there's a, you know, the entrance to the property and a first-level parking garage. As far as our client and his role in this, yes, Mario Margado and his group, they are car dealers. They are the ones that own the property, um, but we, we recognize that that's not the use that's going to ultimately go here at this point. Um, so we've decided to try and eh, bring something to the city that's going to be a, a real positive impact. It may be, Mr. Bichon, that, that we partner with the developer to, to, to develop this thing, it may not be sold, but it may be sold. And there is an opportunity, someone may do something slightly different. If we were to develop the property today, the, the project we've submitted is very much what you would see, but, you know, we're not at that phase yet, we want to get our entitlements first, and then we'll have to be back before you with a site plan approval, which will go into a lot more detail, and, and I'll get into more of that as, as we progress. A little bit about the property. The property, as you know, is a one-point-zero-seven acre parcel located on, just west of the Broad Causeway on a hu, on northeast, one hundred and twenty-third street. It's currently the location of the White House Inn. And as you all know, the White House Inn is a property that has, you know, a bit of a history in the city, a lot of negative things have happened there. It's, it's, you know, it's been, it's been the source of a lot of bad press, and we see this as an opportunity to take what's been a stain really in the, in the community and make it something better, something iconic, something really wonderful that can add to the city. So a little bit about the history of the site from a zoning standpoint. Again, we're proposing to do multi-family development here, that would be a hundred and fifteen feet in height. The property was zoned R four today, we know that, but it was previously zoned R six. And in two thousand and seven, it was, it was downzoned to the current zoning of R four. Had it remained R six, it would have allowed for a hundred and ten feet in height, which is very similar to what we're asking for today. And I can tell you that based on our experience and my experience working with Jeff, from around that time to the present, we, as zoning attorneys, received a lot of calls from interested developers that were interested in revitalizing that White House Inn property. It was just asking for someone to take a look at it and make something better of it. But everyone that we spoke to wanted to do something like what we're showing you today. There really wasn't any desire or any incentive for a developer or a real estate investor to come in and do something at the R four zoning, and we believe from our experience that that is one of the primary reasons why that property fell into disrepair and for so long was not touched and was not addressed by someone. We, we, we think we have a project today and an idea today that's going to really change that and make this project, make this property a real positive. Now, the Bay Shore Zoning District, the property is part of the shoreline area that was envisioned to, to contain the Bay Shore Zoning District. If you look at the zoning maps, I don't know if you can see them up there, but if you look at the zoning maps that are here and that you've seen, the, all the properties along the eastern edge of the city, along just, just south of North Bay Shore Park are now zoned BZ. And what staff has told you in their report, and I think we certainly agree, the characteristics of our property are virtually similar to the characteristics of those properties. And really, if you look at the zoning map, for all the properties that aren't currently, currently developed, the residential properties in the city that aren't currently developed, those that are vacant, all of them, except for this property that are on the water, are zoned BZ. I think part of the reason, maybe this wasn't during the comprehensive plan process, we were seeking a car dealership there, and it really didn't, it didn't seem like it was going to go this, this way. But really, if you look at the reasons why the BZ zoning district was adopted and why it was created in the last comprehensive plan round, we meet all those criteria. And, and staff recognizes that in, in their report. And I'm going to give you some of the reasons why the BZ zoning district was actually created from the comprehensive plan studies that were done at that time, and you'll see why, why I'm making that statement. Some of the reasons for the adoption of the BZ zoning district were to allow for greater densities along Biscayne Bay, to increase the city's attractiveness and competitiveness, to provide a greater development opportunity along Biscayne Bay, to increase tax revenues and land revenues for the city, and land values for the city, to allow for greater innovation in architecture and design, and to provide for greater options for market-rate housing, something that, you know, appears to be lacking in, in new development in the city of North Miami. Our project and our proposal addresses all of those points. And for that reason, it seems like BZ zoning would have been more than appropriate for this site during the comp plan phase. We're asking for here today, really to almost correct what should have, what we believe should have been done already. Now, let me go into the requests that we have before you today and, and give you a little more detail. I hope you've all had a chance to review the staff report, um, and, you know, both staff reports. The staff reports, as, as Mr. Held has mentioned, provide competent substantial evidence, facts, data, analysis that should assist you to make your decision. As to the comprehensive plan, I won't go into every component, but the, but as to the comprehensive plan, staff, the staff report says that the application satisfies both state and city criteria as to whether or not you can approve a comprehensive plan amendment. As to the rezoning, the application also satisfies all the city code criteria for approving a rezoning. And, and, and that, you know, we're happy to address any questions you have on those points, but, but Nixon did a, did a good job of explaining that to you. We agree with a lot of what staff has said, and if, if you all read the staff report that was done for the car dealership, it was read, read very differently. Um, we read that, we met with staff, and we, we said, you know what? You know, we're going to take a step back, they really had a negative view of what that would have done, they really felt that so, very few of the, of the comprehensive plan goals and objectives were addressed by that application. And, and we, we took a step back and said, let's try and do something, let's get into your comp plan, let's look at what your comp plan is asking for, and let's try and bring you something that achieves those goals, and that's what we, we've attempted to do today. So as to specifics, the approval of the request is not, and, and if you look at the level of service analysis in your report, the approval of this request is not expected to cause any sort of decline or, or noticeable deficiency in any levels of service or public infrastructure or any other protected category in the comprehensive plan. Further, it actually enhances and achieves many of the goals and objectives in your comprehensive plan. I'd like to go into, into some of those specifically. Uh, as, as Nixon pointed out, the request will promote transitory development, livable urban form principles that would attract young professionals, new blood into the city. And it's a type of density that's appropriate for a major corridor, and really, you have a major corridor here sitting on the water, two components that really tend to drive slightly higher densities than other properties that may be around it. And getting into the housing element, which I think the housing element is really the most important element here because it's something that, in the city of North Miami, there's a real deficiency that we've seen in our, in our analysis, and, and we're happy to see that staff agreed. Currently, there's only seventeen acres of vacant residential land in the city. That is a very low number, and, and as a zoning attorney, we deal with these type of things. And oftentimes, I'm, I'm trying to argue for a type of use where the comprehensive plan map doesn't show a deficiency. And we have to make other arguments as to why it's still needed. But when you have a land use category that clearly exhibits a deficiency in your comprehensive plan, that's one of the primary reasons you want to make a change, to address a, a declining, a declining surplus of some sort of use. For residential, that's the case here. The application will address that limitation in supply by bringing in significant residential units to the property. Additionally, specifically objective three B four of the housing element causes, calls for applications to address density, intensity, height, and size that will encourage new housing. And that's really the gist of this, because if, seven, and something that I did not know until I read the report, seventy-five percent of the city's housing stock, seventy-five percent, which is a number that is way off from what you see in other cities, was built between nineteen fifty and nineteen seventy-nine. That is a very dated housing stock. And it, it appears that every year since the year two thousand, only five single-family homes are brought into the supply every year. That, that tells you that this is a city that really needs an injection of new residential units. I didn't realize, I apologize, I didn't realize, that was a joke, but the application will accomplish that by doing the following. It will bring in new market residential units. It will attract professionals, young professionals, it will raise the city's average income for these units, and will address the aging housing stock that the city really, really needs to bring it in line with some of the other municipalities in South Florida that have been doing more to address that housing stock, to bring in new units. I'm going to hit a few other points before I pass it on to some of my colleagues. Shoreline Review was mentioned, I, I'm not going to get into that in full detail because we're not at that phase, but we have, we got, we got Nixon's eh, letter, and we reached out to Shoreline, one of my partners, who does a lot of work with Shoreline Review, and they told us, when you come in with a site plan, come to us. Our experience in having been to Shoreline many times is, those are the initial, initial eh, conditions that they, that they give you. But then when you go through the process, they work with your project, they work with the city to mitigate wherever you can't meet a criteria. And in every instance that we've had a project where the initial comments don't seem to jive with the project, we're able to mitigate the project, work with staff to mitigate, to find ways to mitigate the, the project, and ultimately get it approved. So we're confident that if we get to that phase with Shoreline Review, we would accomplish the same there. Again, the tax revenue is, is a significant component of this, you're going to get a lot of tax revenue for this project, and it's something that ultimately, it brings blood into the city, financial blood into the city. And if you don't allow for certain projects to come in that bring in that income to the city as impact fees, as permit fees, as new tax revenue, ultimately, city services have to happen, and as a resident of the city, I hope you want those great services. So if we can't get it with new development, you only get it by raising taxes on existing development. That's just the reality of how our government works. I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on that because Andy Dolcart's going to talk to you in a minute. One other thing I want to mention, because I heard that in some of the materials that were distributed, eh, what, what's the shadow impact of this proposed building going to be at a hundred and fifteen feet? We've actually prepared, and I'll, and I'll quickly show it to you, we asked our architect eh, this week to prepare a shadow study, and we do this often to show, because oftentimes, the impact of a, of a, of a building's shadow is, is more than, than, it, it's expected to be more than it actually is, and most of the times we find that to be the case. The date that all municipalities use when they, when they ask for a, a shadow study is December twenty-first at noon, or basically December twenty-first of any given year. That is the date where the shadow is the strongest. We had our architect do a shadow study on two different days, September twenty-first of any year and December twenty-first. These are intended to be worst-case scenarios. And on all the different times, we did nine AM, twelve PM, and three PM. We didn't do the nighttime, we don't think that's going to be an issue. The, the shadow typically, as done by the architect, only goes over the water. The only time that it actually hits any land is at nine AM, this is in, you know, we can't do every day, but these are the worst-case scenarios. At nine AM on December twenty-first, which turned out to be the worst-case scenario, and at, just at that time, and again, it goes away at noon, but just at that time and on that date, it actually goes over the bridge that connects one hundred and twenty-third and Keystone. It doesn't actually go over any home, it does go over the bridge. And I'm happy to show this to you all, this is our architect that prepared this using shadow study software. It's for a, it's the same thing, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifteen feet and fifty-two units.
Please, please, members of the public, keep your comments until the end, okay?
Mr. Chairman, can we have the applicant put that up on the stand so the camera can shoot it, please?
Yeah, is it possible to get a camera view of that? Let's see, well, that's off-camera. Let's come over one and see if that does any better. All right, can we get the camera to zoom in on that a little bit, kind of tweak that? That's somewhat better. Okay. All right, now, matter of where you, why don't you try switching to the other microphone because you'll block the camera view? Okay.
I'm just about to wrap up. Eh, with that, I'd like to eh, turn the mic over to Andy Dolcart, who is our economic expert. And when Andy's done, I'd like to just come back in for a few brief statements before I conclude. So with that, um, and by the way, I do have a handout for you, while Andy's speaking, I'm going to hand you all eh, a sort of a table that summarizes what, some of what Andy's going to say.
Please pass the handout through the, our, our attorney here.
Good evening, Andrew Dolcart, Miami Economic Associates with offices in Miami, Florida. In accordance with the city's requirements, eh, council asked me to prepare a study that would look at the economic and fiscal impacts of the proposed project. And I'm going to just briefly summarize what we found. In terms of economic impacts, eh, the main, the major economic impact is during the construction period when the project will employ slightly more than five hundred people in terms of direct, indirect, and induced eh, jobs. With about three hundred of those people being direct employees on-site, the others being either indirect, i.e. that which is people in supportive industries to the construction industry, such as trucking or building supplies, or induced employment, which is basically people who work in businesses where the direct workers and the indirect workers spend their earnings. So in total, it's about five hundred people. I know, and they will earn during the period of construction, which we assume will be approximately two years, they'll earn about twenty-seven million dollars. Now, there's a tendency, when I do these kinds of studies for eh, public boards, to dismiss construction employment as a non-recurring benefit that occurs. But one has to recognize that the construction industry goes from job to job. There's an industry out there, but nobody ever stays at one site for their entire career. The way the industry works is that you need to have jobs continually coming through the pipeline, so you keep people eh, employed. We learned, we learned the, 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 um, the inverse of that during the period from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve, when our construction, when our, when we stopped doing a lot of the development in Dade County, and construction employment dropped and was a major significant, eh, major reason why employment in the whole county dropped, because construction is in fact one of our major industrial sectors. So that's the major economic benefit during the, the, the construction, is during the construction period. However, once the project is built, it will have residents who will spend money for retail goods, restaurants, and whatever. They will spend someplace in the order of about seven million dollars. In our report, we heavily, we actually provided a range, but it averages that to the end. And presumably, a good substantial portion of those expenditures will occur in shops and restaurants here in the city of North Miami. So eh, that, that's the ongoing eh, recurring benefit that the project will provide. There will probably not be huge amounts of onsite employment once the project is built, eh, but, but that will partially depend on how much of the services that a building needs for maintenance and whatever get contracted out, and how much is done by an, an in-house staff. In terms of fiscal, in terms of fiscal impact, this project will generate about one-point-four-seven million dollars in ad valorem taxes when complete for the, for the city, the county, and the school board in combination. Of that number, about four-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars will come to the city each year, the rest going to the other two entities that I mentioned. Those tax numbers essentially are approximately fifteen times what is currently generated by the, by the building that is on the site today. So it's a significant increase eh, to your, to your tax base. There will also be eh, non-recurring benefits, fiscal benefits generated by the project. Those will include, for the city, development impact fees and construct, and eh, building permit fees that will approximate three-hundred thousand or more eh, during the construction period. And an additional six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will be paid to the county and the school board in the form of impact fees, including two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars for, for roads and about a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars for schools. So on an overall basis, the project eh, will definitely eh, be beneficial both economically and fiscally to the city and the other jurisdictions in which it is located. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There's one item we neglected to do, and we said we would do this at the start of the meeting, and then we did not get to it. And so we need to swear everyone in who plans to give testimony tonight, including members of the audience and the presenters, the developers, and the architects, and so on, so if you'll please stand and raise your right hand. All those who intend to speak, all right. You solemnly swear the testimony you will give tonight before the planning commission shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. All right, lower your right hand and be seated. All right, now, can the developer eh, bring up their next speaker, please?
Good evening again, eh, so thank, again, I just want to thank you all for your time and your patience thus far. I will tell you, Andy's here, he can answer questions if you have them, we're here to answer any questions you may have. I know you're going to have some questions for our traffic consultants, they're here, Kimble Horn Associates. Um, so if you have any questions, they're here to answer those questions, and I'm prepared to do so. With that, I'd. With that, I'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal. I'm sure there'll be some issues brought up that I may want to address afterward. So I'd like you to give me some time to do that after we have some testimony. And again, thank you for your time. We're here to answer your questions once those, and we, we look forward to hearing whatever you have to say. And, uh, reserve some time for that after, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, counsel. All right, ladies and gentlemen, now we open the public hearing. Now, when we do this, just so you all understand the ground rules again, this is a board of record. And any background noise that distorts the record damages the record. So please, for or against, just keep your comments to yourself, allow each speaker their opportunity. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. We have a center aisle, we ask that you queue to both sides of the center aisle and alternate between the podiums. All right? Now, the floor is open for public comment. Each speaker has two minutes. Marlene, are we ready with the timer? All right, first speaker, come on up, you know, state your name and address, and the others, please follow along. And, uh, let's try to keep this organized, or we'll be here till the cows come home.